Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 2nd, 2023 Gilbert Town Council Meeting. I would like to ask you to please turn off and silence your cell phones and devices, all of your cell phones and devices, if you carry more than one, please. And I would like to invite clergy Steve Louder of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints to the podium to offer the invocation. This one, please clergy Louder. And happy birthday to you. Thank you for being here.
Let us all take a moment to pray together. Our dear Father in heaven, we as thy children gather here in the halls of the Gilbert Town to be a part of the most wonderful community that we know throughout this land of freedom. We are grateful for our mayor, Mayor Peterson. We ask that she might be granted wisdom and patience and the love and the strength to do and fulfill the responsibilities that have been set upon her. We are grateful for our council members, for each one of them, for Bobby and Scott and for Jim and Kathy and for Young and for Chuck. We know that each one of them loves this community and we desire a blessing upon them, a blessing of continued kindness and civility, a blessing that they know that the tone they set in these halls is a tone that will resound throughout our wonderful town. We have blessed them, please, with the ability to speak freely and with compassion, that we will find unity in their words. We bless them with the wisdom to not desire to be right, but to do what is right. We are grateful for the faith leaders in this town and we ask thee for a special blessing upon their houses of worship, that they might be filled with those who are humble and that humility might reign in Gilbert. We are grateful for our business leaders and we ask thee to bless them with integrity and philanthropy in their success. We are grateful for our first responders and for the town employees and we ask thee to bless them with a continued love for all of the citizens of Gilbert, that thy angels may guide them to those who are in need and struggling. We are grateful for all of our friends and family and neighbors and citizens of Gilbert. Help all of us to be a little kinder, a little more forgiving, a little more understanding that we might break down the walls of diversity and see each other as you see us, thy children, struggling and striving through trials and tribulations to do our best, help us to help others overcome. We pray this and we pray thy spirit be here in this town meeting in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Steve. Now, if I could ask council member Anderson to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in reciting the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
If I could please ask our town clerk Herrera to please conduct the roll call.
Mayor Bridgette Peterson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kathy Tilke.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Chuck Bon Giovanni.
Here.
Councilmember Bobby Buckley.
Here.
Councilmember Jan Kaprowski.
Here.
And councilmember Jim Torgerson. A quorum is present.
Thank you very much. On this municipal clerks week, I'm just going to keep saying it to recognize you, the first proclamation that we have this evening is National Travel and Tourism Week and councilmember Buckley will be presenting to Economic Development Director Dan Henderson. Dan, if you could please come down and councilmember Buckley, if you could please make your way down to the floor and Kirsten will assist you down there, down there. Thank you very much. We don't want to stand you behind the podium, councilmember. Great, thank you.
Thank you. So this is National Travel and Tourism Week, whereas Gilbert serves on the U.S. Travel Association and whereas the U.S. Travel Association is the national nonprofit organization that represents the advocates for all components of the travel industry. And whereas tourism in Gilbert generated $310 million in visitor spending in 2021 and saw annual revenue, hotel revenue grow by 36% in 2022. And whereas travel is a pillar of economic growth, creating jobs at a faster rate than other sectors nationally, and whereas the Gilbert Office of Economic Development supports vibrant communities to enhance the quality of life for residents of Gilbert and visitors to Gilbert. Now therefore, I, Bridgette Peterson of the Town of Gilbert, do hereby proclaim May 7, 7-13, 7 through 13, 2023 as National Travel and Tourism Week.
Well, thank you for this proclamation and those kind words. We've got a couple of members of our tourism advisory group here and I'd like for them to introduce themselves.
My name is Denise Lopez. I'm the president and CEO of HD South, the home of the Gilbert Historical Museum.
My name is Dallin Timothy. I'm a professor at ASU. I'm a geographer and I specialize in tourism and economic development.
Jamie Belcher, the general manager of Phoenix Gilbert Hampton and Suites.
Mayor, members of the council, wonderful recognition and without these dedicated individuals on our tourism advisory group, tourism wouldn't be what it is in our community. And so heartfelt thank you to you all for all the work that you do day in and day out. Mayor, councilmembers, councilmember Buckley, thank you for the recognition.
Dan, don't go too far because you'll be up again in a couple of minutes. Their next proclamation is Gilbert Water Professionals Appreciation Week and this proclamation will be presented by councilmember Anderson to our Water Resources Manager Lauren Hickson. And to say that Lauren's been working overtime recently is an understatement with water situations going on in the great state of Arizona and she's bringing a whole team down to join her.
Okay, so we have this copy with bigger. It's the same thing, it's just bigger letters. I didn't, no, they did. Or you can do this one, do the same thing.
Is Rebecca not here?
She's at a conference.
Oh, she's at a conference, okay. You are looking at a team that is vital to this town and to our growth. You may have been watching in the media here recently about the shortage of water on the Colorado River. Our team in Water Resources has made sure that Gilbert is in a good position. Our portfolio is strong and we can look forward to the future thanks to the vision of this team. So we're very grateful for their efforts. Whereas Gilbert has a diversity of water resources, groundwater preserved in vast underground aquifers runoff from mountain rainfall and snowmelt collected in reservoirs, Colorado River water moved through hundreds of miles of canals to Gilbert and recycled wastewater treated to drinking water standards. And whereas every home in every sector of Gilbert's economy, from finance to healthcare, requires safe and reliable water to thrive. Whereas Gilbert has been a leader in sustainable management of groundwater resources and has pioneered innovations such as water recharge and expanding the reuse of treated wastewater to replenish aquifers and improve local water supply reliability. Whereas Gilbert has become a 100% water reuse community, that's very important, by the way. Whereas water conservation efficiency and water reuse reuse are vital components of holistic water management for a sustainable water future. And whereas Arizona's water industry offers a wide variety of rewarding career opportunities in engineering, hydrology, water operations, biology, policy, economics, business administration, law and communications. Now therefore, I, Bridgette Peterson, Mayor of the Town of Gilbert, do hereby proclaim the week of May 8th through the 12th, 2023 as Gilbert Water Professionals Appreciation Week. Thank you so much for all your efforts.
Sure.
We're going to have everyone introduce themselves and say how they're connected to the water industry. As mentioned, I'm Lauren Hickson, I'm the Water Resources Manager.
Good evening. My name is Jean Jensen. I am the capital improvement supervisor over the utility space. I'm also the incoming chair of the AZ Water Association.
My name is Vivianes Barca and I'm a wastewater pre-treatment inspector.
Good evening. Ken Snow, Town of Gilbert wastewater manager.
Jeremiah Churchill, Water Conservation Coordinator.
Stefan Wallson, Water and Energy Resources Planning Advisor.
Jessica Marlowe, I'm the public works director overseeing the water and wastewater operations for the town.
Councilmember Torgerson will be presenting the economic development, to Economic Development Director Dan Henderson. Come on down, Dan and team.
You're afraid of what I'm going to say?
No, I'm warning you what you do.
I'm good, my friend. I've known Dan for 10 or 12, maybe longer and this, the downtown that you see, everything comes out of his department and comes out of this. So I'm happy to present this. Whereas Gilbert deserves, Gilbert serves on the International Economic Development Council and whereas the IEDC is the largest professional economic development organization dedicated to serving economic developers and whereas Gilbert was the first economic development organization accreditation recipient of all economic development organizations in Arizona as recognized by the IEDC. And whereas the Gilbert Office of Economic Development promotes economic well-being and the quality of life for the community through their efforts focused on creating, retaining and expanding jobs to facilitate growth which enhances wealth and provides a stable tax base. Now therefore, on behalf of Mayor Bridgette Peterson for the Town of Gilbert, I do hereby proclaim May 8th through 12th, 2023 as Economic Development Week.
Economic development's a team sport by all means and couldn't do it without certainly mayor and council, our executive leadership team and certainly all of Team Gilbert. And so just like to thank you for the recognition and with that, I'd like each of us to introduce ourselves.
Good evening. Jennifer Graves, I serve as the deputy director for the Office of Economic Development.
Good evening. Michelle Streeter, I just joined the economic development team as their marketing and communications project manager.
Welcome, Michelle. I knew you were, first time in a council meeting. Next, we will have a presentation for the Cadet of the Year, Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Abigail Kramer from Higley High School. And I would like to ask Veterans Advisory Board Chair Dave Rosenfeld, Patrick McNeil and Ken Enfigur of Southwest Veterans Foundation to please join me down on the floor.
Come on up here, Abigail. So I have, well, let me start by saying thank you very much for those of you that are here in attendance to help celebrate this young lady. And I have Kaia Misha Gaia up here as well. She is with the Chandler Council and she is the CEO of Global Maternal Wellness. So she is also going to be a presenter. But as the chair for Gilbert, I found we were not communicating very well with our sister cities around the area. So I've reached out to a bunch of our other east side veterans chairs. So Scottsdale, all the way down here to Chandler, Tempe, Mesa, out to AJ and Queen Creek. We get together monthly just to talk. And one of the things that is a passion of mine is beating up on these young kids that are in ROTC because they are taking a step that the vast majority of their peers are just not willing or able to do. They're stepping up and saying, I want to be a leader. This one, Abigail Kramer, not only has she stood up and said, I want to be a leader, but she literally is the commander of the Corps of Cadets for Higley High School. She runs that program and Colonel Vaughn, who is their instructor, will tell you that it's a student-led program. She has stood up and competed in many of boards and we invited 20 high schools, 20 high schools to participate in this competition. They were a bunch of chickens. And that's hard for a 22-year Army vet to say, the vast majority of these schools just wouldn't participate. They didn't have the courage and intestinal fortitude to do it. This young lady put together an amazing packet, talking about her achievements, talking about everything that she's done, and there was no competition. She is head and shoulders above everybody else that, you know, would have competed if they had the courage to do so. So on that note, the Town of Gilbert and the East Valley Veterans Coalition is absolutely proud to present you this JROTC Cadet of the Year plaque. And we've got this amazing goodie bag that goes along with it. I'm not going to get into everything that's inside there, but you will need a gym bag, I promise you. So it is, it is, I'll double that for you. While I do this, give her a big smile right there. And we'll take a bunch more of these, but that said, Patrick, Ken, you want to take a moment and do your thing?
Sure. My name is Pat McNeil. I'm a Navy veteran. I'm president of the Southwest Veterans Foundation and Ken is with the Southwest Veterans Chamber of Commerce. We're the fundraising arm of the chamber and we are happy to be here and present you with a check for $200 to help you on your educational and leadership journey. Now this check is really nice and probably suitable for framing, but you're not going to get it into the ATM machine at all. But we do, yeah, that'd be fun, but we would like to give you this check that you can cash and you can put into your funds and account, so.
All right, so yes, my name is Kaia Misha Guy. I am a Navy veteran and part of the East Valley Veterans Coalition and so my husband and I, Matthew Guy, we also are going to present you from the Quiet Waters Veteran 501(c)(3) that is located in Chandler. We have a card in here because like I said, I'm a mom, so you always give a card. And so within that card is a $200 gift card to Walmart because every high school and college student needs to be able to shop for some groceries and everything else. So congratulations. You take care.
All right, if we can get everybody up here and we'll, Mom and Dad, you want to join us? Colonel Vaughn, let's get up here.
Kirsten's going to be bossy and she's going to tell us exactly where to stand.
Yes, I would.
I didn't put her on the spot, but I'm glad.
I'm going to put her on the spot. She's trained for this, right?
Yes, yes, I am. I would first like to thank the Town of Gilbert. This is an amazing town to grow up in and to go to school in. I loved writing the essay and I remember the first time I even got to meet you was a year, a little over a year ago during the youth government day and really I love the Higley Unified School District and everything it's done for me. JROTC is an amazing program and I even have some cadets here today who came and supported me. So I would like to thank everyone here also. I thank you so much.
Congratulations. Proud to have you. Thanks, Dave. It's always wonderful to be able to recognize our youth, no matter what capacity they're serving in in our community. And I can tell you, our youth are doing some amazing things in Gilbert. I get to see them all the time for different events and I'm so proud of them. We will now move on to communications from citizens and I will pass to you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. The Gilbert Town Council values citizens' comments and input. Anyone wishing to speak before the council must fill out a request to speak card for each item. They wish to speak on and submit it to the town clerk or place it in a bin provided prior to the start of the meeting. The communications from citizens portion on the agenda provides citizens an opportunity to identify for the town council matters of interest or concern related to town government that are not on the printed agenda. Under the provisions of the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the town council is prohibited from responding to issues that have not been properly noticed. Therefore, the town council may only listen to citizens who wish to address them on non-agenda items. At the conclusion of the open call to public, response is limited to individual members of the council responding to criticism made by those who have addressed the public body, asking staff to review a matter or asking that a matter be placed on a future agenda. The town asks, when your name is called, you come forward to the podium, state your name and place of residence and then begin speaking. All speakers are expected to observe common standards of decorum and courtesy. Personal attacks, political speeches or threats of political action are inappropriate in this forum and will be grounds for ending a speaker's time at the podium. We have several speakers today and before I begin, I have a card from Dominique. And so it says you want to speak at communications from citizens, is that right? Not the public agenda item?
I don't think it's the agenda item.
Okay. Okay, great. I'm going to hold that. If you come back later and realize it's on the agenda, just let me know, okay? All right. Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, so we will begin. You'll have three minutes if you'll come to the podium. The first person will want to turn the mic on. You'll know your mic is on when you see the red light. And as soon as you begin speaking, there is a clock there, so you'll see how much time you have left. So everyone will have three minutes. And we will begin with Tyler Sutsmo, Sunsmo? So please correct me when you, when you come up if I said that wrong. Following, okay, I get it. Nobody knows how to say Tilke either, so. Following Tyler will be Dominique.
Thank you all for being here and listening to our, our issues. I'm here on behalf of my son. He, everyone who's a parent in this town knows that there is a transportation gap between teenagers and 16-year-olds. They still have places they need to be. They have limited ways to get there, especially when it's 115 degrees outside. Danny over here at West Coast Scooters has provided an incredible way for people to get from A to B using green technology. There's no motor that's driven it. It's all electric and they can, like, my son goes to a, he goes to a gifted program. There's no bus that can get him there. My wife and I both work, so he has to get himself there in the morning, which provides an opportunity for responsibility, self-reliance, accountability, a little bit of mechanics, all things that young men need to have growing up. I think everybody can agree to that. He was hit by a car on his way home, crossing a residential street, hit by a car, and as he's on his way to the hospital and I'm nervous and I'm freaked out, I don't know what's going on, the police officer tells me that he cannot cite her because, because they said that that vehicle is illegal. That is a problem. If you cannot classify this vehicle, I'm asking that the council please consider it be a micro mobility device. be a micro-mobility device, because that's the best category that it fits in when I looked up the statutes. Now, because, you know, he didn't hit her quarter panel. He was under the front of her vehicle. But because they said that it cannot, it's not an unclassified device, they can't just determine liability. I've got a $2,600 electric, I mean ER bill. His scooter is absolutely totaled. I don't know, I mean, I'm asking grandfather to drive him to and from now, which is a big burden for a guy that's 76 years old, okay? So, I'm asking the council, please consider actually classifying these devices so that no one else has to go through this stuff again. I already have the headache of my son, you know, recovering from this accident. And now I have to figure out the insurance part of it when there's no liability established from the police department. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tyler. Next is Dominique. And then, following is Tom Smith.
Good evening. Dominique Hippelit, owner of The Hype Network, previous employee of a small-owned Gilbert business, and friends, and contracted. We'll see if, when I send them the invoice, if they pay it or not. West Coast Scooter, that's, I'm here on behalf of them. I was speaking with Danny and Scott today. They filled me in on a lot of the details of what's going on as in, I asked them to explain it to me as a five-year-old coming into the situation. I actually am an owner of a West Coast scooter as well. I purchased it for my son last year for his 16th birthday, because he didn't have his license yet. And quite frankly, I didn't have the funds to buy a car. I'm sure we all know what those costs look like right now. Just to piggyback on some of the things that Tyler said, as far as mobility for our children when we're at work, for them to get home to school, different programs. My son worked and actually saved enough money to buy his own vehicle, but it's still sitting in the driveway, so we'll get there later. But, the ability to have resources in our growing community is extremely important. So, what I'm confused about is the classification of an apparatus that can't even be titled or insured or licensed, because it doesn't have a VIN number. And my son, as a young African-American, is he supposed to be riding around in fear that he's going to get pulled over? His only mode of transportation is from school to the gym and to work is going to be confiscated, and then his mom's going to be hit with a $1,900 ticket? For me, as a parent, in a community that I'm trying to raise all three of my children in to be productive citizens, how are we regulating these things? And what can be done so that the actions of maybe a few who don't have as much supervision as they should, or maybe didn't get, the parents didn't quite understand the responsibility of giving a bicycle that can go 20 miles an hour to, you know, someone who's 13 or 14? So, I don't know if this specific situation has been put on the docket for there to be, like, real discussion about it. But I know that if emails are being sent, calls are being made, and there's not more than, oh yeah, I did get it, and I thought that I sent, like... This is the Town of Gilbert. I think that we should have a paper trail. There is a paper trail. And I'm just trying to figure out, how do we come to a solution so that my son isn't taking two extra miles, taking back roads, coming home from work at 11 o'clock at night because he's scared that he's going to get pulled over? So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dominique. Next is Tom Smith. And following Tom Smith will be Danny Bassett.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm here this evening to point out a huge discrepancy in compensation in the Town of Gilbert. We're the largest town in the United States. We know that. Gilbert's median household income is $142,804 bucks, the highest in the state, seventh highest in the country, largely due to past council decisions and attracting great employers. Thank you, and all you passed ones. The lowest full-time town employees start around $58,000, and the highest-paid employees hover around $250,000. We pay for the cream of the crop, and we expect to get what we pay for. But here's what we don't pay for the best. We have a mayor who receives $43,000, and a council that only gets $21,000. My first suggestion is you may want to change your career and apply at McDonald's, because you're going to make more money. That's first. Municipalities of our size pay far differently nationwide. Are you aware that municipalities comparable, yet smaller than Gilbert, such as Buffalo, New York, Chula Vista, California, St. Louis, Missouri, pay their mayors between $132,000 and $158,000 a year? Their council members are paid between $61,000 and $75,000 a year. In Maricopa County, Gilbert is by far the lowest of comparable communities. Phoenix pays their council three times what ours has paid. Mesa pays their council twice what Gilbert pays. Tempe's mayor is paid over 50% more. Mesa's mayor is paid nearly 70% more than ours. Gilbert's a far more affluent community and growing, while those other, those mentioned are not. We need the best and the brightest leading us. The compensation should be such that we attract that kind of talent for the future. And you're not going to attract talent, in my opinion, by paying somebody that's working full-time. All of you guys work full-time. You guys work many hours, and those of us that are around you know that. And you're not, you're not being compensated enough. And I hope that in the future, that can be changed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Up next is Danny Bassett. And following Danny is Scott Wisely.
Hello, my name is Danny Bassett. I am a resident of Gilbert and a small business owner. Nice to see you all again, Mayor, council members, town manager, Rob. Nice to see you. We spoke a couple months ago. Kathy, I did speak in depth with you about this, and Patrick also. And I just kind of want to know where we're at, because I have got zero response from anybody. The only person that has communicated with me was Rob for a while and Mr. Torgerson. So, I mean, I just want to know how this is supporting small businesses in the Town of Gilbert. You know, we've done nothing but good for this town. We bring in revenue. We bring families together. We give people opportunities to get around, other than driving their cars. We have special needs adults and children that use our scooters. I went over all of this in our last town council meeting, and I didn't get any response. And it's just very frustrating as a business owner. And I want to also protect the 500-plus customers that we have out there that ride our scooters, or now they're not. Now they're just sitting in the garage in fear that they're going to get pulled over, impounded, and get a $2,000 ticket. These are not motorcycles. I did everything that you guys requested that I do. I took it to the state, ADOT, National Transportation, to do a Level 1 inspection. I was laughed out of there. They told me there's no way these should be on the road. They're not DOT certified. We have an importation document stating that they're not for roadway use. I don't know why these are trying to be pushed on the road. It's too dangerous. This is not where they need to be. I know there's a group of kids in a certain subdivision that are wreaking havoc with these scooters, motorcycles, CERONs, et cetera. But they need to be dealt with case by case. These don't need to be banned. We need to move in the direction of EV anyway. This gives people so many opportunities to save money and get around town in an efficient manner. So, I just want to know what we can do to resolve this. We're not trying to fight the city or the town. We want to come to a conclusion and a resolution to this problem, because it's just getting worse and worse and worse for us and our customers. So, thank you.
Thank you, Danny. Next up is Scott. And then, following Scott is Jesse Lars.
Hello, I'm Scott Rizley, Gilbert resident, or resident Gilbert. Also business partner with Danny. I think he actually touched on a lot of the stuff that I did want to talk about. But I am the original founder of West Coast Scooter. I started this business seven years ago. And it's been great for six years. We've been invited by Gilbert every single year to do events. We've been in the Gilbert Days Parade for five years now. I'm just really confused and bothered how the city has treated our business. Out of nowhere, suddenly you guys deem our scooters illegal, all because of one neighborhood, Morrison Ranch, because of teenagers. I don't think it's fair. I don't think it's right. And, you know, we can pick up and move to another town, you know, Queen Creek or somebody else. But we do have 500-plus customers here that we owe a responsibility to try to resolve this issue. It's already cost us $150,000 probably in the last five months. I mean, we pride ourselves on referrals. We have 90% of our customers referrals. So this has really hurt our business. And I just, I don't understand it. You know, my grandpa was a Arizona politician. My cousin's a state senator, now US ambassador. And I'm just ashamed of how we've been treated as a small business, getting no response from anybody. Nobody came to us, tried to, I mean, this is the only city that I know of that treats these as a motorcycle. And I've sold these all over the place, other states. There's other businesses that have these. City of Scottsdale has storefronts that rent these scooters. They don't seem to have a problem with them. But the city of Gilbert, where we've done business for seven years, suddenly has an issue because of some teenagers in Morrison Ranch. I just want to take care of this issue. So, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Scott. Jesse is next. And following Jesse is Brandon Riff.
Good evening. My name is Jesse Lars. I'm a facility director at Arcos Health here in Gilbert. And I'm here in support of West Coast Scooter. My wife and I and my family came here five years ago, not knowing much about Gilbert and where we came from before. We really did not feel like we were a part of the community. Gilbert has embraced us and our family, and the small-town feel has really gotten under our skin. And we really enjoy being here and meeting Danny and Scott and being a part of this scooter, these folks with scooters, has been such a great experience for us. It allows us to, you know, go to a lot of these small businesses and spend, spend our dollars having a good time and being with family and just being a part of this community. And, you know, you know, we were told that we may be forced to be put back into the street. And this, I mean, I don't know if it's just this community, but Arizona, I've never seen so much traffic accidents as we do here. And I'm not sure what the reason is. And putting our slow vehicles on the streets would be very dangerous for us, and it would be a shame to see that happen to the small business and hurt them. And so, I hope you guys reconsider and put them in the right category for us to be able to enjoy, you know, the safety of the sidewalks and the safety of all these areas that we're, you know, like a lot of the people that walk around can enjoy. So, I just wanted to share that with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jesse. Next is Brandon Riff.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Brandon Riff, Gilbert resident. Somebody sent me a video of the mayor giving the Gilbert State of the Town presentation last week. Near the beginning of the presentation, the mayor highlighted the absence of certain council members in what appeared to be a derogatory manner. Maybe it was lighthearted. Only the mayor knows. To me, the mayor did appear to take personal offense by the absence of certain council members, insinuating, from my perspective, that their absence somehow means that they don't support the mayor or the town. I wanted to make sure everyone knows that some of the council members were not able to attend because they were instead at a neighborhood meeting regarding the largest industrial project in the history of our town. And they were there to support the residents who elected them. Vice Mayor Tilke has been most involved and deserves recognition for keeping the process peaceful and productive as it relates to the developer and the residents working through various issues. Even more impressive, Vice Mayor Tilke was able to meet, to appear at both meetings. And I think that really speaks to her dedication to this town and the residents, and I want to thank you for that. Last Friday, we ran into an issue where planning staff had some objections to the plan the residents and the developer for the ranch project have been working on for over six months. The disagreement had the potential to derail the entire thing. And I reached out to Kathy, and she was out of town. She was heading up north. The last thing she would want to do is deal with this, but that's the first thing that she did, because that is the first thing that she, she wanted to do. One would not want to do that. You're out of town, you're out of town. You don't want to deal with this kind of stuff. But not Kathy. She said, let me find out what's going on. And then, our town manager, Patrick, and Kathy called me together and wanted to discuss what was going on. And they wanted to bring about, you know, some calm and provide information that clarified what was really happening. And it tempered emotions, and it brought us to the logical side of thinking instead of the emotional side of thinking. And it kept the deal on track. So, what I want to, aside from saying thank you to Patrick and Kathy and Kyle Miras, also, he was very helpful in keeping everything factual and objective. My message that I want to leave you guys with, I'm running out of time here, is too much of the development in Gilbert has been led by developer and staff. And the residents try to get involved. And a lot of times they do, but a lot of times they don't. And I can tell you, being the resident and trying to interact with the developer, it's absolutely critical that we have the support of the council. And none of the negotiations that you've seen happen between the developer and the residents would have happened if it wasn't for the council, Vice Mayor in particular. Jim has been also very heavily involved. And so, please remember that, because this should not be the developer and the staff running the town as it relates to how everything is built. We really depend on you for our voice being heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riff. Mayor, if I could just make a clarification. Mr. Smith, I just want to make sure that your comment was for communications from citizens and not in regards to our budget later in the, on the agenda. Were you talking about a future discussion, not about this budget?
No.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we had you classified in the right department, so thank you very much for that. Mayor, with that, that's all of the communications from citizens that we have.
Thank you. Now, if you'd like to move on to consent calendar, Vice Mayor?
Yes. Mayor, I have three items to be pulled. Number 17, Young Kaprowski. 18 and 19 for Jim Torgerson. And with that, I would make a motion to approve consent items number four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 20, and 21.
I have a motion. Can I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Tilke, seconded by I have a motion by Vice Mayor Tilke, seconded by Councilmember Bon Jivani. Please vote. Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 17, Councilmember Kaprowski.
Thank you. I'd like to abstain from this vote as the owner of Y2K Engineering, who's a qualified vendor for the town and may provide engineering services. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. With that, I would like to make a motion to approve item number 17.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Anderson. Please vote. Could we have our voting? There we go. Thank you. Please vote. Motion passes 6-0 with one abstention. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Torgerson, did you want the separate or together?
Together.
Together? Okay. With that, I'll turn it over to you.
Actually, I believe the police chief had something that he was going to be able to tell me about the repercussions of taking these two grants.
Mayor and Council, regarding 18A and 18B, I was asked to provide a clarification with these grants. There are no matching funds required by the town, and we are not obligated to any future expenditures or anything related to this, other than the terms within the grant for these specific items granted. Any other questions regarding the grant?
So basically, it's done, it's one and done.
Yes, correct.
There's no ongoing expense, no, nothing that we have to do besides purchase that.
Nope. This, it's one and done. As you stated, however, each year, we get GOHS funding, so you will see funding from this, but not related to what you're approving or reviewing tonight. Each one's handled separately.
Right. Thank you, sir.
Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve items 18 and 19.
I have a motion, can I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Tilke, seconded by Councilmember Torgerson. Please vote. Motion passes 7-0. That concludes our consent agenda this evening. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Moving on to our public hearing portion of our agenda, items we heard at one public hearing, we do not have any slips for anyone to speak on any of the items ahead of us this evening. I will go ahead and open the public hearing. We have the liquor license, general plan rezone, code of Gilbert property acquisition, and two budget items. Would anyone like to have separate discussions, presentations on any of those items? Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing, and I would entertain a motion to approve, or I would entertain a motion for items 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, and 27. Microphone, please. Thank you.
I moved to accept and vote. I'm sorry, I'm...
Move to approve?
Yes, move to approve.
Can I have a second? Councilmember Buckley, did you second? I'm sorry, did you second?
I did.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Torgerson, seconded by Councilmember Buckley. Please vote. Motion, oh, still voting, there we go. Motion passes 7-0. Thank you very much. I will go ahead and recess our regular meeting and reconvene in special meeting. We have two items on our agenda for the special meeting. The budget, which is the discussion of the property tax levy, and the budget, which is the acceptance of the preliminary budget for July 1st, 2023, through June 30th of 2024. I would invite Kelly Fost to the podium to give us a short presentation on your items this evening. Ms. Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Glad to be with you tonight. I think the presentation will pop up shortly.
Just one moment, it's rebooting.
Perfect. I'm just going to test that it'll advance. It will. All right, I'm going to give a short presentation tonight. You've heard a lot about the budget, so I'll be very brief and then provide answers to any questions you have or discussion. So we are here tonight for a preliminary budget adoption. Gilbert is best in class. We have a lot of accolades that we've talked about. Midsize employer in Arizona, city whose unemployment rates are bouncing back most. Gilbert's just a great place to live, work, and be. As we talked about, the zero-based results with the inflation. Normally, we have zero-based removing money from the budget, but because of the inflation, it did add money this year. So our total savings since 2018 is 7.6 million. Our budget process takes a year long. We have done our council one-on-ones in April, our study session in April. Tonight is preliminary adoption, and then final adoption is in June. The preliminary adoption is important, although there are two adoptions. This will set the maximum amount that the town could spend in the upcoming year. The final budget can be less than, but it cannot be more than the adopted budget tonight. In the budget, there are about just under 44 requested positions across the town based on the business case needs of the various departments. There is capital improvement projects, about $1.4 billion of capital improvement projects. Most of that investment is on the street side and the water improvement side that are needing investment now, and that we've done some bonding for those improvements. With the capital improvements, there's about $900 million that's carrying forward from projects that have already started or in current-year budgets, and then about $450 million of new projects that would be added and started next year. We have added crime lab construction costs of about $56 million, and this is based off the feedback from council at study session, so that is included in the packet tonight. The comparison with the fiscal '23 budget, you can see it's about $378 million more in the different categories. Most of that increase is associated with the capital improvement projects, and then some on the debt service side. The debt service is because some of the bonds that we issued in 2022 had a first payment in the 2023 budget, but there's usually two payments per year. So now that we'll have both payments, that's reflected in there in the debt service. Councilmember Kaprowski asked for a visual of this. So this is the same information, but in a pie graph that lets you see that most of the budget, about three-quarters or 70%, is associated with the capital improvement projects. And of that, most are carry-forward, about one-third of that is new projects. The property tax levy that is proposed tonight is $31.6 million, which would be an associated rate of .9883. And that brings us to tonight for our preliminary budget adoption. Any questions that I can answer for council?
Thanks, Kelly. Love the pie graph. That was a great idea, Councilmember Kaprowski. Any comments or questions for Kelly? This is your time to speak on the budget.
Mayor, if I could just...
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I don't have any questions, Kelly, but I just wanted to thank you for taking the extra time with us to explain the budget. I think the documentation that we received is a lot more detailed than what you gave here, but the comparisons year over year and understanding the, some of the challenges that we've been facing with inflation and all of these other, you know, the length of service, time to get our equipment in, all of that, it was taken into account. I know it's a very long, hard process that staff goes through before we get it, but I think that, as always, we're being very conservative, we're being very wise with the way that we spend our money. And so, thank you for being there to answer all of our questions, because I know there's been tons of them from all of us. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Torgerson?
Hi, I just wanted, in this case, we're looking at the maximum, but there were some things I had asked about in the past. We'll be talking about that at the retreat later and...
Are you mentioning property tax in specific?
The property tax and what the impact would be about taking better care of our first responders in retirement.
So on the property tax side, there was not consensus coming from study session, so I left the numbers as originally proposed, but that could be discussed by council here tonight. On the retirement options with the first responders, I know that Human Resources is looking into that. It's not reflected in the budget here, because it hasn't been studied and an answer made from council. But changes can still be made mid-year when that information is brought and those changes made at that time.
Kelly, just for reassurance, would you explain again how you're accounting for the possibility of the food tax, the rental tax being taken away, and/or recession?
Sure, I'd be happy to, Councilmember Anderson. So there is, Gilbert relies very heavily on sales tax, which is a very volatile revenue source. And so recognizing that, that there are potential pressures from the legislature making changes to our food tax, our residential rental tax, or potentially just a recession that could decrease sales tax or sales within the town, we've budgeted very conservatively. We're probably going to get about $145 million of sales tax revenue this year. We're budgeting, I think, $128 million for next year. So, we're being very conservative, trying to make sure that if something does happen, that our ongoing operations are not at risk. The benefit of doing that is if revenues do happen to come in at the higher amount for next year, then we're able to use that as one-time money for the upcoming capital needs or projects as we look at fiscal '25. When the money's already come in, then we'll be able to do the cash fund some infrastructure or other needs that town has on a one-time basis.
Councilmember Kaprowski?
I know that each year, the secondary property tax comes up and the tax levy comes up, and just wanted to talk a little bit about that and how Gilbert does not have a primary property tax. We have secondary property tax, which is highly restricted money used to pay back voter debt. And it's more financially prudent to keep to those levies and payment schedules so that we don't extend that payback period and pay more interest over time. And there are programs available to reduce the burden for low-income seniors, widows, widowers, and the disabled that come through programs through the county and the state for those taxes as well.
Thank you for those comments. That's great information. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Bon Jivani?
Kelly, I was amazed at the whole process of this. Can you explain a little bit more for the citizens what department heads go through? It's kind of like a Game of Thrones kind of thing, isn't it? Can you please explain that poll process?
Sure, thank you, Councilmember Bon Jivani. We do tongue-in-cheek call it our Hunger Games process within the town, but it's a very collaborative process, somewhat unusual in government. So, all of the departments will put their requests together, and we will get together as the executive team, all of the department heads, in January and February, and go through each of those requests and collaboratively decide with the available funds what is most important for the service levels across the different departments in the town and what has to wait. It's very beneficial, because sometimes we find efficiencies that we didn't even know about, having everybody in the room together. And then, the executive team will produce a recommended budget to the town manager's office that's balanced. Town manager will ask questions, know some more of the broad level needs, make changes or adjustments. And then that combined budget is brought to the council for questions and any additional changes or thoughts that council has.
So there's give and take within the departments, correct?
Yes, there is.
Thank you.
That's where the Hunger Games comes in. They have to fight for what they want. So, being the preliminary budget night, I kind of mentioned to a couple of the newer council members, typically, this is the night that we do the most discussion about the tax levy and rate at this meeting, because the budget can't go up past this point, whatever we vote on this evening. And our next meeting is kind of more of a, it's a, we just have to take care of it at a second meeting, and we vote on the second, this budget for a second time. Tonight's the night that if you have any questions or comments or any concerns, I would recommend that you get them out. Councilmember Buckley, you have your microphone on?
Well, I don't have a lot of questions. I have gone over this, and I just wanted to say thank you to you and the staff that the hours that go into this budget are just astronomical. And so, you've, I think you've done a great job. I know how to read budgets, and I know what the numbers are and what they mean. I don't, I'm still in this learning process for the town, and hopefully next year, I'll have lots of questions for you. But, thank you, and I appreciate you meeting with me every month and going over the numbers and what they mean and why we have them. So, thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. I don't want to insinuate that you can't ask questions at the next meeting. It's just typically the process I'm trying to explain, so, yeah. Councilmember Torgerson?
All right, so since, you know, being a newbie with how you set this up, I am, I look at certain things in the structure that I find different than I think historically happened here. For instance, I look at a public information officer that I think should be under a specific department, not in a department reporting to another person outside of that whole chain of command and around. Is that something that we can handle in the budget process if we find it worth handling?
Mayor, Councilmember Torgerson, so structure is less financially related, and that might be something to bring up with the town manager or to have a study session or a retreat discussion about that. If you wanted input from all of council or just to do your one-on-one with the town manager and ask questions, find out information, then we could get that to you as staff.
But if they're paid for out of one budget but operating in a different department, per se, that budget would have to be turned over to that department in this process that we're going through right now, correct?
Council usually adopts the budget at the fund level, and money can be moved around during the year based on the needs of the organization. So if it's more of a reporting or a structural question that you have, it would be good to address that through town manager or through a study session or something topic on that.
Okay, because what I'm specifically talking about is, let's say, fire was to have their own PIO, rather than that person being budgeted out of somewhere else. Are they budgeted out of fire?
I can do my best to speak off the top of my head, but I don't know all of where everybody's budgeted. We do have some positions that are budgeted in one area and report to a different area, like some attorneys that are working in police, but they report to town attorney's office or some IT people who work in courts and report that. So I don't know on the PIO, if that's the sworn person that reports and is paid for out of fire, or if that is, I know there's a digital person, I don't think it's the PIO that's paid for out of digital government.
Right. See, to me, I think that if somebody's working for a department, they should be, they should be behooved to report to that department head, let's say, the chief of fire, chief of police, to, then to Leah, and then to the mayor, not around them, or not to the mayor, to the manager, but not around. Do you see where I'm going with that?
I do. It's probably more of a HR or reporting question, and we can move the budget to the appropriate place for the person as needed.
All right, so that wouldn't be handled in this part of it? That would be handled afterwards?
That, that level of detail is not usually part of the adoption process on the reporting. There might be if, if there's a new position that's been requested that council does or doesn't want to authorize. I haven't had any experience with council wanting to discuss any of the existing already authorized positions, but could.
Well, I look at it as a business sense. I wouldn't have somebody work for one person and report to another and create separately. I would, if somebody was working for me, I want them reporting to me. I would want, I have the responsibility for them. Whatever comes out of, they say, I'm responsible for. I would want them under my thumb, not someone else's. And I'm looking at this purely business. It's how it's handled in normal business. It's not moved around. So that's why I'm asking this. Really, it's, it's an odd-sounding question, but I don't want it to be, well, we can't because it's not in the budget to do that. I'd like to see people that are truly responsible for their own information.
I'm going to, I'm going to step in for a second, because I don't really think that this is a line of questioning for Kelly, because I think it's more of an organizational question, and I don't know if Patrick wants to say something?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilman, Councilman Torgerson. Yeah, that would be a conversation outside of budget. I think what Kelly was trying to get to is, you approved the budget at the fund level, so within the general fund, we can move positions within the year as we deem appropriate for organizational purposes, and would be happy to have a conversation on any matters like that. But for the budget, it's not a discussion we have as part of this process.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bon Giovanni?
Yep. Kelly, you mentioned it in the very beginning, but I want to make sure everyone's clear on it. The budget that we're talking about today is a maximum, maximum amount. At the end of the year, if there's excess, what happens to that?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Bon Giovanni. It is a maximum amount, and in Arizona, you're not allowed to change the budget mid-year, so we have to prepare for unexpected things that happen. So there is always unspent money at the end of the year. If the project's still being worked on, then it would carry forward, and we would look to adopt it in the following year. Or if the project just came in under budget, that money would return to the fund balance and be allocated for, for additional things as needed in the upcoming year.
Great. I just want to make sure that was pointed out again. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
So I will, I will make a comment. I'm fine with putting the crime lab in and keeping it in there for a placeholder, but I still think that, and I wanted to say this evening so we can get this out, but I still think there's more discussion to go on the crime lab. I don't know that the council has come to a consensus of whether or not we should be moving forward with the crime lab, but I think it's great to have a placeholder for it in case we decide to do that. And the tax levy is, the tax rate is always a big conversation on this evening every single year, and I'm really encouraged to hear that it's not as big of a conversation tonight, that we can move forward. We've done a great job historically in reducing the tax rate in Gilbert, considering we don't have a primary property tax, we only have a secondary property tax, and it has gone from $1.25 down to 99 cents in the past about fifteen, ten, ten years. And before that, it had been the same forever, like back to 1995. It's been $1.25 from 1995 till about 10 years ago. I had Kelly send me the historical on that, and to keep it at 99 cents, which is something that we promised to the public when we did the bond for the public safety training facility and when we did the transportation bonds last year, or two years, two years ago now, we made that promise that we would leave it at the same rate and not have to increase it. And so I'm pleased to hear this discussion this evening. If anyone would like to make a motion for the item 28, which is the FY 2024 property tax levy, I would be open to that.
Mayor, I'll make a motion. I just want to clarify, is this one that I need to read from the packet?
Probably safe.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I don't think so. I think you could just move to approve by the item number.
Okay. I move to approve item 28, which is setting the property tax levy for FY 24.
Second. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Tilke, seconded by Councilmember Kaprowski. And that motion passes with a six one, with Councilmember Torgerson as a no. Now, moving on to 29, we've had the whole conversation together as the tax levy and the budget. Would anyone, does anyone have any more comments or questions about the budget, or would we, somebody would like to make a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve item 25, establishing the preliminary budget for July 1, 2023 through June 30th, 2024.
I have a motion. Can I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Bon Giovanni. Motion passes seven zero. Great work, everyone. Thank you. Again, we will see this item, these items again in June, because we have to have a second meeting by state statute. I will go ahead and adjourn the special meeting and reconvene the regular meeting and move on to our administrative items. We have boards, commissions and committees. Does anyone have any reports from their boards and commissions, task forces, anything? Yes, Councilmember Torgerson?
Not truly on my commission, but I wanted to say to the men of our fire department, I sat at a cigar lounge on Sunday, and a man collapsed next to me. He stopped breathing, and he started again after some gentle pushing on him, but fire arrived very quickly, and they were so calm and so professional and so warm that it was noted by the people in the lounge, talking about it separately. Fire had no idea I was on council. They couldn't care less. But it was, it was great to see that they had made an impression upon the people of this town about how professional and concerned and, and great they were at their job. And I just wanted to take a minute to say that, because it was, it was really great to see that. It was really great to see people recognize these guys as being great for them. And that's really all I wanted to say.
Seeing no other comments, I will move to communications. Report from the town manager on current events?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. First, I want to thank Kelly, her entire budget team, the entire executive team that is a part of an 11-month process in Gilbert, putting together this budget, serving a very large community with a vast array of services that I think the entire team does an exceptional job in delivering. So thank you for another year behind us. Enjoy July, because we'll be right back at it in August. I'd also like to recognize Amanda Elliott from our economic development team. She was recognized by the Arizona Association for Economic Development for her leadership. She received the President's Award for her work on the organization's website redesign. So congratulations, Amanda. We're proud to have you on our team. That's all tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks, Patrick. Moving on to report from council on current events. Anyone?
It's Patrick. Yes.
I will go ahead then and move to comments from the mayor. As I've done for the past couple of meetings, I want to remind everyone that we will be having a Memorial Day ceremony right here at Town Hall on May 29th, 2023, from 8:30 a.m. to 10 a.m. Our Veterans Advisory Board and HD South in partnership have, hold this event here, and we're very excited to be part of it again and to be back here at Town Hall in the lawn. I think it's a perfect location for it. I'd like to also announce, on behalf of Gilbert Leadership Class 31, that they will be doing their project reveal on Saturday at 10 a.m. at the Riparian Preserve. They have created a mental health and wellness and suicide prevention walk within the Riparian, and we have several members of Team Gilbert in this class, and I'm very proud of them. I know that this has been one of the focus of our community engagement task force, so it goes together very well with what we're doing here in the, in the community. And otherwise, I don't have, oh, please participate in the Parks Open House for the plan that they are putting together. The Parks Master Plan is being done right now, and there are study groups being held and opportunities for the public to be part of those. If you just go to our website and search for that, you'll be able to find all of the dates that are available, or follow the town on our social media, because those dates are available to you there. And otherwise, I think that is it. So I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Thank you.